... thirty. Our areas of focus tonight, not in this order necessarily, we reserve the right to move things around for people who are here. Parks and Rec, police, library, employee benefits, risk management, and public works. So, does anybody of the board have any questions or concerns from last night that you want to bring forward while it's fresh in your mind, or can we jump right into Parks and Rec?
I have some answers for you from last night.
Perfect. Great. So, the tourist camp permits. Yes.
Are actually boarding house permits. And thank you for calling it to our attention. We decided that is so small, we're going to eliminate that account in next year. The first payment will go into miscellaneous revenue account.
Great.
Which is our catch-all. That was another question you had last night, what goes in there. In fiscal eighteen, we had some large items. They were refunds from fiscal seventeen expenses. And the way the accounting works is if somebody refunds you something in the next fiscal year, you have to put it in as a revenue. You don't credit it back to the expense. So, there were some high ones for that. But really, it's a thing for items that are not recurring, or items that are really too small to require their own account. You asked about the, you know, Jack Davis asked about the investment income. Jen and I talked about it today. We feel right now that it should stay as it's proposed, given the volatile economy. But since the revenue is more toward a finance purview, we'll leave it to them to have a more full discussion. The lost workdays. We had three large claims that accounted for one hundred and forty-seven of those days. And they were due to sprain or strain types of injuries. Two of them were police officers who suffered injuries struggling with, I like this, non-compliance suspects. The third was a custodian who suffered a strain injury when lifting a box here at Town Hall. And Lori points out, the majority of our workers' comp injuries are the results of sprains and strains. And we've offered training in the prevention of over-exertion injuries in May of two thousand seventeen, and we offer, you know, training like that periodically. And the police department has a regular and rigorous training program to prevent on-the-job injuries, including how to apprehend a suspect.
Without getting injured.
The corrections to motor vehicles, that is all, it is not just errors. It is, as I thought, anything that's changed to the motor vehicle grant list. You had asked about age fifty-five in the senior center, what was the origin of that? That originally came from the AARP definition of a senior citizen, even though now they go down to fifty. Interestingly, the state level for eligibility is age sixty. If there's a state service, it's age sixty. You asked what private sewage disposal permits were. That relates to septic systems, which the health department regulates via site visits, soil testing, plan reviews, permits, inspections, and then permits to discharge. So, David says they tend to be complex and time-consuming. We routinely have large homes being proposed, restrictive soil conditions for onsite sewage disposal, because I think some soil lends itself to septic systems better than others. So, that's what that's for. And lastly, you had asked about the medical advisor, and I passed out a letter from David regarding that topic, and a list of all the cuts that I made.
Thank you very much.
Great. And I think that was everything.
Okay.
At least everything that I have written tonight.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, then we will invite Pam, if you'd like to come to the table. Adele, you're welcome to join her if you wish.
Okay. So, Parks and Rec has its own tab. Summary's on page one ninety-five. First section of Parks and Rec is the administration.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Maybe I just never knew this. So, have you, has Parks and Rec always been in charge of the police department grounds?
No.
Oh.
It was looking pretty raggedy, and Jim Flynn offered to take it on.
Okay. I wasn't sure that was new enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
I had one question on one ninety-seven. Christmas tree lighting, as I understand it, was at the sports shop. What is Sportsplex? You said the Christmas tree, the Darien tree lighting at Sport, at the Sportsplex.
Yeah. That must have been an error, because where I, in my previous job, that's where we had Sportsplex. So, my error.
It was a sports shop, right?
Yes, sports shop. The Connecticut Sportsplex. Some things that are embedded.
There's a Sportsplex down in Stamford, Kansas City Diner. Pretty good. Okay.
So, the first part of the budget, the administration budget, is really rather uneventful. No staffing changes. It's really a status quo budget here.
What are Q-Lers?
Q-Lers are, that's a system on our webpage where people can send us a complaint or notification that something needs to be fixed. Any kind of condition they see, comments they want to send in.
They then get sent to the right department head, and then, it's a great system.
These are your Q-Lers?
Those are hers.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a number, you know, there's a whole host of things that you can send us through Q-Lers. And Pam was right, it is a great system. One of the things it does is it tracks the days to respond, and like, if it's sent, if the original person who gets the Q-Ler is maybe an assistant or superintendent, and it's not done in a certain number of days, it then gets routed up a level.
Going to the principal's office.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on the administration? The next section is the beach and court facilities. This is where a large part of the revenue is. The budget, the expenditure budget is, again, basically a status quo budget. I did reduce the request for overtime based on historic actuals.
Can we go back to two oh, page two oh four?
Yeah.
The building rent. Is that, for example, like, the Darien Arts Center renting, or what's that?
Paddle Hut.
Paddle Hut?
No, that's a fun.
No, that's up there.
Paddle Court.
That's Paddle Court. Oh, I got it. All right. Yeah, never mind. Beach and court, that would make sense. Okay.
Now, the revenues this year, the data, forty-two eight on Paddle Hut. On Paddle Court, the season will be over in about another month and a half, two months. Are you comfortable with the seventy thousand this year, and for the seventy thousand next year?
Can I just, you know, this is only through December, so...
No, I know that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just saying, the season is almost halfway over. I'm just wondering whether you're, or more than halfway over, you're comfortable with the number this year, and that's what you predict for next year.
Well, and last year's actuals were quite a bit below...
Right.
That's why I asked the question.
I knew that. And then Jim, Jim and I had a talk about that, and he felt that there was a reason for some of the snow the year before, and the freezing that had closed the courts. And he started off really, very strongly this year, so we were like, well, let's stick at that seventy and see how we feel.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the trend line...
It did, it took a little dip, and we were continuing going up for years. And so, with good conversation, we just said, let's keep it at seventy, and then we'll see if we continue to get more.
And if you look historically, we're getting the seventy.
It used to be seventy.
Do you track them monthly? Like, do you, are you able to say, like, okay, as of December, the forty-two eight is on par with...
Yeah, Jim, we usually do those right during the quarterly reports, too, and bring in statistics that way.
Yeah. And you could look in news and do it monthly as well.
Because I was saying the same thing about the Paddle Hut rent is...
That's a little more difficult, I'd say, at this point, to be predictive with, because it's new. It's, you know, we don't have a long history there. And I think you're trying to push the rental of that more and more.
And the more people that get in the building and see the building, so I was a little disappointed last year. We only went up, you know, a little bit. But we're, we have plans this spring and summer to really make a nice push. So, we're hoping for the fifteen.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on the expense there? Really a status quo. The next budget is recreation facility maintenance. This is where we have something more important, you know, serious to talk about. This is where the restoration of the position that had been moved to DPW is. I do support that. I believe they've been making do with the smaller staff, and there comes a point where you can't do that, even with our existing parks. But now, we're adding additional properties with Highland Farms for them to maintain. Hopefully, Short Lane will be more heavily utilized. And if the trail, the running trail goes into dealer property, that will require more maintenance than it currently does. So, I do think that it's important to add this position back, to give them back the staff that they had.
Yeah, it's just a restoration, and then when we get to Ed's budget, we'll talk about it again.
We can talk about it, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
So, my question about that is, have you looked into possibly subcontracting some of this out, subcontracting some of it out, like the mowing of the grass? Could that be done by someone other than a Parks and Rec employee, as far as just cutting the lawn, or cer, I mean, obviously, that's not year-round, but are there certain jobs that could be subcontracted out, so we're not paying benefits at all?
That's a good question. Well, that's, that'd be an issue with, we'd have to be sure that our union contract allows us to use outside people to do what is union work. And I don't believe it does.
And that would probably incorporate all the work that this position would do.
Mm-hmm. What we can do is use seasonal or part-time employees, but we run into issues with limits on how long you can consider a person a temporary employee. If you're working them forty hours a week, there's only so long that you can legally call them temporary, under Connecticut labor law. Where you have to consider them full-time and give them all the rights and benefits of a full-time employee. With part-time employees, then you're going to have to keep them under twenty hours a week, and that's hard to find people.
Right. And the training also.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I was thinking of a landscaper who you wouldn't need to train, was someone that came to mind. The other thing, and I think I know the answer to this, but without everybody going crazy, obviously, the Board of Education doesn't have as many grass fields as they had a couple of years ago, because of the turfing. So, is there any way to share someone from the Board of Education and the town side without having the unions have a problem? Or has that discussion even taken place? Does that sound like the Board of Finance has to start with the consolidated services? But when it's somewhat of the same job, I mean, I'm sure it's not exactly the same, could that be a discussion that takes place? And like I said, we'd probably have to generate from the Board of Finance at level.
I think we absolutely could do that. You know, how we would administer it, for one, their union pay tends to be higher than So, that could cause a little problem. But it'd be the question of sharing the services and who has first dibs. I think it could, I think it absolutely could be done. I just think there'd be an awful lot that'd have to be worked out.
And who has oversight? And, you know, I think we had some of these conversations before, and making sure that the expectations and the standards of service delivery match with what the Board of Education expects.
Mm-hmm.
But it's a major sized question.
And that's what we expect.
Absolutely. I mean, I think, and that's kind of going to be my theme for tonight on a lot of things, are, we keep hearing that there's, we don't know what's going to happen in Hartford. We can only control a certain amount of things. We can't, we can't even control how much money we get back from them, let alone what kind of quote-quote bill they may be sending us. So, I guess I'm looking at this whole budget, if there's any areas at all that we can, and I'm not saying to have less, less quality of service, but if there's anywhere in here that we could possibly find some extra dollars, because we may be sending more money there. And that's how I view the whole book. So, again, I think it has to be the Board of Finance that's driving this conversation. I don't think the Board of Education wants to hear from the Board of Selectmen that, you know, shared services, let's, let's open up that conversation. But I think it has to be out there. Anyway.
Also, in this budget, the motor fuel lubricants line. I had reduced that to four hundred dollars based on past history. That opened up the discussion that, well, why hadn't it been spent in the past? And it turns out, Pam looked into it, DPW had picked up some of the Parks and Rec expenses in the prior years. So, I would ask that we restore the budget to twelve hundred dollars, based on Pam's finding with a supplemental budget request that justified the expenses. They are being accounted for correctly now. And then the last thing I'm going to highlight on this page is the tires. We have some expensive tires to buy this year for the loader. It's not an every-year kind of item, but this year, we need to buy tires for the loader. And that's driving the cost increase there.
How long do the tires for the loader usually last?
Hmm. That's a good question. That's a good question. I'm not sure. I would say it's probably a pretty good number of years, because if you look back in the history, at least the last three years, we haven't bought them.
I should note this, how many loaders do we have? If you have a loader?
And he has a loader.
Two? Okay.
That's what I figured.
Kate, can I just go back for a second, I'm sorry?
Yep.
To page two oh three, which is the admin. I know the professional services is going away, because that was credit card fees that were combined now.
Yes.
But software going away, what happened?
That was the same, actually, the same thing.
That was also associated with...
Part of it, yeah. When, when they moved to the new management for the software.
Got it. I looked at my book last year, just, pardon the question. You got the full one, so sorry.
On page two oh seven, that revenue item, that's where we see, remember, I talked about the accounting change?
Yep.
So, that's where you see the, do you have any side of the accounting change? On two oh eight, you'll see the expense side of the accounting change. Other than that, this really is a status quo budget. I did reduce the request for the printing slightly, based on what has been spent in Then the last part of the operating budget, page two ten. So, first, you see a large decrease in the facility repair and maintenance. When I was reviewing the budget, originally, there was not detail supporting this, so what I went and did was I looked at the history of the count, and where it was averaging. So, I'd had discussions with Pam about that. And considering that historic, the numbers I was using for the history of the spending in the count did not reflect usage of Highland Farms, Short Lane, or dealer property. They were either not in use at all, or were very lightly used. And we expect that they will be used in more in the coming year. So, Pam has asked that that account be restored to eighty thousand dollars, and I do support that. It is an account that, we're going to look at the method of budgeting, how we do it next year, to make it one that is, you know, better supported. But I do believe we need to add in some funds there, to bring it back to eighty thousand dollars.
From the seventy.
From the seventy. Because we do have three, three parks that will have increased usage. Sewer use charges, that was based on actual expenditures, so I reduced that to reflect what the actual bills have been. And heating fuel, that was actually a department proposal. And then the waste containers. We're adding waste containers with separate recycling bins, and they are more expensive, but they're going at, my notes at Cherry Lawn and Philly Park.
Mm-hmm. To begin with here.
Yeah.
Before you leave this, on two oh nine, you had revenue of park facility permits up by ten thousand dollars. What was the genesis of that?
That was a confusing one, because what we did was we, the money that was coming through the gates was being put in a different account, so we switched that out. And we found that our facility permits, which Jeannie handles, were generating a lot of revenue.
So, people will rent, like, they'll rent the picnic area at Weed Beach, things like that?
Or organizations will run something out of our parks, and we charge a fee for that. So, and we've increased our fees for that as well. The commission has increased the fees for organizations renting the parks.
So, this is kind of a reclassification?
Yeah, is it being moved from some other account? Revenues away from another account?
No, the revenues, it was last year. The revenues from the gatehouse were in that, in that facility permits.
If you look at some of the older actuals, they were higher.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. So, last year, is it, was the aberration?
Yes.
Where I pulled back the code. Okay.
Put the funds where they should have been taken.
So, can I ask about the waste containers and adding recyclable containers? It sounds like a great idea, and I think people will appreciate that. Will the solid waste and the recyclables actually be separated? Or will, is there a risk that they will be co-mingled upon being picked up?
Jim Flynn and I had a long discussion about this, and they're going to do their very best, because we handle all the trash, to make sure that, that's why we wanted to buy the separate areas in the trash cans, that you would, you know, put whatever you need to put in the cans and the recyclables. But we're going to do our best to make sure that they're not co-mingled.
Has it been working at, like, Weed Beach has them separated out?
I don't think it's, it could be better. Yeah, because I think there's times where our...
Overflow.
Yeah, and they'd take them and they'd put them in the, in the dumpster. And we need to do better with making sure that everyone's following the rules with how they're getting separated. But, I mean, we've even been, had a discussion with, maybe our parks crew shouldn't be doing, maybe we should be contracting out. But Jim really likes the fact that he's saving the town a lot of money by doing it. And I think that's the reason why we haven't had them in other parks right now, because it's hard to manage. But he's willing to do, give it a try, and make sure, because I think we should be good stewards in the parks, and have at least option for people to recycle.
Like I said, it's a great thing. How many containers will this be?
That's only a few, couple, because we, and we didn't want to get carried away, because , you know, the other side of the coin is, should people be taking away their own trash? You know, so there's a lot of national parks and things that don't have trash cans.
I think we did have the discussion.
We did.
You know, and it's, and I, and I go back and forth about it.
My example, when we had that meeting, just for the public to know, is now with new security measures, before our push-and-pull parade and Memorial Day parade, and events in Tilly Pond Park that are all-town, the trash receptacles get taken away as a security measure. And you'll notice that after those big, all-community events, we don't have a problem with garbage on the ground, because if receptacles aren't available, people will take it away, or find some other way to dispose of it. So, before we go to crazy buying containers, although I want to acknowledge that I fully support recycling.
Right.
But what will be a challenge for me is if our staff is spending a disproportionate amount of time sorting garbage. And then I would recommend that Jim, if he hasn't already done so, talks to Ed and Craig Flaherty, because there's a big issue with recyclable contamination, and what isn't, isn't able to be recycled because it's contaminated.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, just some comments to take note of. Okay.
Okay. Do you have any other questions on the operating budget? Pam does have some capital. And, let's see. We haven't taken any capital out of water. Let's see. It's like page sixty-nine. Sixty-eight is the beginning of the requests. So, there were a number of requests. I'm going to start with the order that they appear in on this, on this report. So, the first was to replace equipment at playgrounds. This is an ongoing project to regularly replace pieces of playground equipment. It's not specific items. I don't know if you have anything particularly in mind this year, but I think it is a good program to continue to make sure our equipment is up-to-date, interesting to the kids, safe. So, I believe we should continue to fund it.
Can I ask a question? When we, when the click-on first went into Weed Beach, was there any extra funds that were left for maintenance or new equipment, or basically whatever they raised, they spent?
It was all spent.
Okay.
Yeah.
And nothing in those extra funds that we could repurpose?
There is, there are Parks and Rec gift funds. Usually, they're pretty specific when people, like, there's, one is not so specific, the Park Pals, but there's a Weed Beach gift fund, which is specific to, obviously, buying things for Weed Beach. There's not big money, except for that Park Pal's.
And the Weed Beach money, we have actually moved in as a contribution on the revenue side in capital non-recurring to offset for the sun shade.
Oh.
Okay.
Yep. I did, I skipped over the equipment replacement program, but that's our regular replacement of the trucks, the vehicles, things like the beach comb or the lawn mowers.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Tree replacement program, another ongoing thing to allow us to replace the dead trees and diseased trees that we take out of parks. It's not a big dollar amount, but I think it's important. I'm going to skip over the next one, so we'll come back to it, because that's a big one. Irrigation time clock. That is for, yeah, to provide a central control platform. Let's see. It can detect nicely abnormal flows of water, saving us water. The system can be accessed remotely. Pam, I don't, which parks is it going into?
That's going to go into Cherry Lawn. We currently have it at Town Hall Fields and Holahan Field right now.
Okay. So, it'll, it'll help, yeah, it'll help, you know, monitor our water usage, hopefully use less water, but still maintain the fields appropriately. And we have the sun shade, which would go on that playground at Weed Beach. It does get very hot. I think it'd be a good thing to put there.
Umbrella, or a big piece of fabric, or...
Big piece of fabric.
Okay.
Yeah. And it'd probably have to be on the lower side of it, because the unit is still very tall on one end of that playground. But at least providing some shade for the children, I think that's a really good idea.
It won't sail away.
Can we use the Park Pals money for that?
That, I think I have to go back to what the original, what the original Park Pals money was for.
But the sixty-one, sixty-one, eighty-one can be used.
Right. The budget already...
The budget has a revenue item for that.
Okay.
I did not put forward the basketball court and the backstop replacement. I felt with all the other ones that I was putting forward, something would have to give, and I thought those could be postponed until next year. And then, the big one, short lane construction.
Can, before we talk about that, can, I'm looking at your priorities, although, you know, what you just said makes sense. Pam, do you, are you supportive of the priorities that Kate has moved forward, because you've prioritized them differently?
Yeah, the irrigation is...
I am. I am supportive of that. And I think that we have, we do, we do need to put the basketball court back in, in my, in my opinion. We have plenty of residents that, wondering where it is, would love to have it. We only have one in town at our parks, but I certainly agree with Kate that it can wait one more year with all that we have going on.
Okay. And just to reiterate, I'd love to have us have a conversation with Babe Ruth about about Holahan, the Holahan Field. See if there's some kind of public-private partnership that can be forged.
Right, and we, we agreed, the commission also agreed on working with all the sports clubs, too, in terms of giving back toward the maintenance of fields.
Great.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I considered was the amount for the basketball court that, you know, if we did that, we might not be able to do the others. That kind of got more projects included. So short lane construction, the short lane property is what we bought adjacent to Weed Beach. Parks and Rec has already done a nice job of clearing out a portion of that, but this money would allow us to clear out more, put in a walking trail, move the wetlands.
Yep, mitigate the wetlands, which we're currently doing the applications for right now, working with Weston Sampson for the design of the project.
We've seen that, you came before us and provided that plan.
Yeah, it would take a beautiful piece of property that we bought and make it, you know, accessible to the town, townspeople for recreation on an everyday basis. I don't believe the 500 was sufficient to put the parking lot in.
Right.
It is something that I would recommend that the Board of Finance consider as part of a bonding package, and if they were to do that, increase the amount of it to include an asphalt parking. Right now, we would use the, what do you call it?
Overflow.
Overflow parking. You might have some people wanting to have some nicer events on this property where you could put a tent up, and I don't think they're gonna wanna be walking through the dusty overflow parking, you know, to go there, but, so if the Board of Finance would consider that as part of a bonding package, I would go for the extra 100, I think it's 125,000 dollars to get the parking.
And I originally took that out of there, because I was, I was thinking it would be too much, but then I was asked the question at my, at my budget meeting, you know, do you need it? Do you want, do you want that as part of the project? And, and we do.
So that's in addition to the 500?
Right.
To 125.
One, excuse me.
An additional 125,000.
I wrote down 25, such an optimist.
Are there, are there any economies of scale to be had? Should we consider bundling this with a construction bid for Highland Farms? Same kind of construction we're talking about?
I would imagine, yeah. I don't think the construction of the lot itself is necessarily the same. I'm not sure what your designer had anticipated, that Highland Farms is coarse asphalt. I don't know what they had talked about.
I believe that same.
It would make sense.
Yeah, so then it would, you would think it would get us a better price if we were bringing somebody in to do both.
I think this was a lot less than what.
Well, that's why we should be talking about them. If this moves forward, we should talk about them together. Okay. Is this a, how firm is this price? 500,000?
I, I wanna say firm.
That was an estimate from your.
It was. We, we knocked it down based on what I felt that we could remove, and one was the parking lot. And I passed this project through a landscaper in town, too, who also said that that looks like a great number.
Okay, but it's not a bid?
No.
Okay.
No.
No, so we could ultimately, we could ultimately save money, actually. Someone could come in a lot lower than that.
Okay.
For all we know.
Any other questions on Parks and Rec capital?
You got a big lawnmower. You got a big field at that.
I know.
You just cut it with a six gang roller. I'm serious.
That's next question.
It's shaking its head back there.
Well, it's inexpensive to get in your tractor to pull it.
Just get some sheep.
That's next, next expense.
Yes, question.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
I think if I heard correctly, Katie said that the Park Pals fund is reflected as revenues?
Not the Park Pals fund, the Weed Beach, the two Weed Beach gift funds are reflected as revenues in the capital budget.
I just asked a question, because I work with JAC on the reserve funds, this name's a bunch part of that project, and were there any other funds other than what you just mentioned that were also considered as revenues?
No, the other one that would be related to the budget is we've eliminated the cemetery capital request with the intention of them drawing down from the trust fund.
So it doesn't appear in the budget?
And just to be crystal clear for me, Park Pals Play Area Trust is for Cherry Lawn, is what I heard tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, Pam, one thing we didn't say, I think it's phenomenal, is the benches. I think that's a great program, so hopefully that will take off.
Yeah, we had actually spoke at home with Darian today, and they're anticipating purchasing 10.
Great.
For their 10-year anniversary.
Great.
Oh, good.
That would be, that's a, I think that's a really.
I did think the key thing that people know, though, that we are limited.
Yeah.
With our crew, so our crew can only install from September through March, and that's really, we have to, I mean, we could take orders all year long.
Yeah.
But, and again, depending on how many, we might be backlogged, but that'd be a good thing, I suppose.
How much does each bench cost?
Two, two of them are 2,500, and there's another, another two options that are 2,000, and those are maintained for 10 years. And you'll get three options as to where you'd like the bench to go, but ultimately the town and the commission.
So you mean two styles? Two different styles, so one bench itself would cost either 2,000 or 2,500, depending on the style?
On the style, yeah. You have like an athletic bench, a buddy bench, a teak bench, which is beautiful with arms. Remember you saying you wanted benches for arms, too? So, yeah, I'm, I'm very optimistic that it's going to be a very, well, a good program for people to get involved and, and have someone, a memory of someone close them, so.
That's great.
And have you all got the rules behind it that I sent to you?
I had asked the, excuse me, I had asked the question of Pam. I know that in the past, it's been difficult when we've had gifts given in memory, and then time passes and things fall into disrepair, and then the town bears the cost and responsibility of replacing. So I think the policy covers that pretty well. The memorial really only stands for 10 years, and then you can renew it. So it sort of gets us out of that in perpetuity responsibility to fix something or replace something. But it's a very, very nice idea. And I'm sure that you'll keep careful records, because I think that really, the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission will likely consider those monuments or memorials, so they might wanna share in your data keeping on that.
No, I absolutely agree with you. We have to keep good records on it. When they were purchased, when they were installed, and how long, until it has to be renewed.
Okay. Anything else for Pam? Nope.
Just don't do it memorial tree program.
It was originally in there, and I was like, woo, yep.
You cut one down, if you have to, the fewer you cause.
We have a phenomenal tree conservancy program. They do quite well if they do. I didn't need to get involved with that, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have a representative from the police here tonight, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna move the library up, since we have a number of guests here, and Ed, if that holds, you'll be after the library.
I'm gonna sneak another chair.
So is that the issue, you have to cut down the trees, the memorial trees?
What happens is you cut a tree down, then find out, oh my God, that was a tree, and somebody calls up, did you cut down my husband's memorial tree?
Or it's a tree, and you have to replace it.
Which is, you know, some people, if you, you know, for burial option, you can become a tree, you know, they put your ashes in it, you know.
Want to become one of those?
That'd be even worse. Your parents' ashes buried.
We got a notice for one of those.
We're gonna scratch that out of the budget.
All right, well, we got nothing to talk about.
Okay, good evening.
Thanks for having us.
Sure.
So I'm Kevin Ginnis, but I'm the chairman again this year, so thanks. Again, I think the partnership with the town is really terrific in being both a proud resident of the town, as well as being involved with the library. It's, it's really great. So our budget process, again, I think is really thorough. It starts with the administration, which is really centered around Carolyn Allen and Mallory, who's here, and then it goes to the Board and Finance Committee at the library, which is chaired by Tammy now, and, and then to the full board. So it's a really thorough process, and it's something we're really proud of. As you remember, the last three years, we had our 5% salary increases, and, and that was really much appreciated, so we, we passed that. We have closed the gap considerably. I think we're still, in some ways, you know, we're behind, and, but we're, you know, we've made a big dent, and that was really important. And so now, this year, really, the entirety of the, of the budget increase is 3%, and that's really aimed at salaries and compensation. And so we've, we've closed the gap. We really don't want to revert to a situation where we're creating another gap, and so 3% really, we think, allows us to stay in the context of where we need to be to be competitive after the work we've done with you the last three years in the town. And then a couple other points, I guess. Number one, we will be having some, there'll be some noise next door near, near term, so we've got about $2.5 million we're gonna have to spend out of the endowment on the front side. Over the next couple of years, we've got geothermal and HVAC upgrades and replacements to do, so that, you'll see that starting this spring. And so a tight parking situation for the month of March and April will get tighter. That's something we're trying to figure out and work on longer term, but it is important upgrades. It'll, you know, be great, these are long-term investments, but large expenditures, and you'll see a lot of activity over there for the spring and then through the fall. And with that, I'll just turn over to Tom.
Thank you. As Kevin said, Caroline Lopez is with me, and she's done a whole lot of the lifting of the budget, so that's been very helpful. And Mallory Aaron, who looks after the program side of things, has been very helpful, too. So our budget increase is 2.3%, and the $87,000 that it totals is essentially all compensation. If you look at the total of salary and benefits, it's 102,000. We've got some, some reductions other place, and, and that is really what we're investing in. We are a knowledge organization. We have, over the years, put the rest of our budget pretty much in line, and there are three things that, that, that really drive it. First is the staffing. Kevin said, as we've said, we're, thank you very much for letting us have the three years of 5%. That really has made a significant increase in our ability to attract and retain staff. We've gone back to 3%, which is what we had for the three years before we had the 5% in place. That's one. That's a big part of it. That's, that's around, the total amount of that 3% is reflected in our budget is around $70,000. When you take, it, it's kind of funny, because we go by anniversary dates. If you were hired on December 1st, then when there's an increase in place, you get it on your anniversary. If you were then later on promoted, and you were promoted on May 1st, then your anniversary date shifts to May. So we actually have in this budget this year, in the, in the prospective budget, we actually have $20,000 that is carrying over from the 5,000 from last year. So one way to say, oh my goodness, five, you know, that, that's carrying over, but it was also deferred from last year, so we didn't have that. And, and so then, the 3%, it totals around 70 some odd thousand dollars, and about $50,000 of it will be reflected in this budget, and then in the next budget, the remaining 20%. So, so all told, we, around $70,000 of the $87,000 increase in compensation relates to that. Then, at the beginning of the year, John Bleiberg retired. John was the assistant director, and had been with the library for over 10 years. And he, we haven't replaced his position. We promoted two people, Caroline and Mallory, to associate director, and they've got responsibilities. And so they got some increased compensation related to that. That was on October 1st, so that, that three quarters of that is reflected in this year, and one quarter of that will be a little bit in there. And then James McNutt, who is the head of user experience, picked up a lot more responsibilities. He did it. And then what we did was we brought, we, we, we had to have another position in the user, in the user experience technologies base. We did that, but that's at a significant amount. So the combination of all of those changes actually results in about a $25,000 reduction in our overall budget. And so those are the management responsibilities that I, that I note on the middle of page three. Then for building cleaning, we have been outsourcing our cleaning since we started, and it's really hurts. For the last two years, I've started to hear comments from people about, it changed from, my God, the library looks fantastic, to complaints about how dirty it is. Because the model that we had, which, which came in right after 2008, when people could hire people for a reasonably insignificant amount of money and let them stay, that model no longer worked. For the last two and a half years or so, we've really been struggling with making that. We, we tried to look for other, other companies that could do it at the $97,500, which is the same amount that we had had for 10 years, and it just wasn't working. So as we started last year, we, we were still intending to do that. Turned out to be impossible. We shifted a company, that was even worse. We put out bids to go back to what we wanted to do, and they would have been in the, you know, about 160,000 instead of 97, to find the kind of people who could do it. So, pretty unwillingly, we switched to a different model. Vic Penciero, as you know, everybody knows Vic, he doesn't do much cleaning, but he organized, he was looking after the cleaners. What we did was we brought in a full-time employee. He works, Vic works until 3:30, starts early, and then this person starts after that, and so that's 40 hours. And then we, then we're bringing in another, we're bringing in about another 40 hours of part-time work. But, so we have, we're, we're doing the building right now with about 80 hours of cleaning. We, you know, we're open 72 hours a week. Tonight, we'll be open till 9:00. It's a little hard to clean when people are there, so that has to take place afterwards. So that increase goes from about $97,500 to about, about 117,000, so call it $20,000 more. That includes the benefits for the full-time person that we brought in. That $20,000 is something we might have wanted to do a year or two ago if we had, if we thought we had, but, but we didn't have the room to do it. So we, we did do that this year. We're doing it with 80, 80 hours. We think that's gonna work. If it doesn't, then we'll have to kind of look to see if there are a few more hours that we have to add. But that's our plan for this year. We won't change it. We'll work through it and make sure it works. So those are the three drivers.
And I have just one comment to ask, because earlier, I, look, it's, at the board, we also talked about, can, is this something we can just outsource? Isn't always better to have the cleaning services? And the reality is, I think they did a great job negotiating the $97,000 contract 10 years ago, but what you can get for $97,000 in cleaning that building is just unsatisfactory the last few years. And so when we looked at, okay, what do we have to outsource it for? It was gonna be well in excess of 150, and so Vic had the idea of, can, let's just own and control it, and even including the benefits load, et cetera. We think it's far less expensive for the town, and, and it's a better, frankly, it's a better cleaning. The other ancillary benefit we get with it is Vic has another set of hands, and frankly, the, the maintenance costs of the library, because Vic does so many things instead of outsourcing them, and now included with the other FTE we have, we think in the end, there's other just really tangible great cost savings that we get out of. But it is something, to your earlier point.
Good, well, you know.
That we did discuss a lot, and we feel the exact same way.
Yeah. And, and in fact, in, if we go to page four, which is our budget, and you look at, if you look at lines 20 and 21, so those are building operations and maintenance and service. Line 20 is where the cleaning was. So you see, in 2017, 2018, it was 132, and our adjusted budget is 73. That's the reduction in a significant amount of outsourced cleaning. But we also have, if you look at maintenance and service, line 21, we've reduced that over, over the years by some $20,000. That's exactly the product of Vic being able to do stuff inside that we were doing outside. Since he joined us, we've reduced the total of building operations and maintenance services by 25%. building operations and maintenance services by 25%, the part that is, that is what we are able to do, just because we've got Vic there. And now Alex as well. So that, those are the pieces on that. If you look up on, in the upper levels, if you start at, if you start at line four, that's where in 1718, we were 329, and now we're down to 303. That's the savings from the change of John Bleiberg leaving. And then you'll see a couple of increases in line one, a couple, you know, it's a 3% increase. That's a merit increase, so it doesn't automatically go. In a couple of areas, it's up a little bit more, just because some of the carryovers. So total, total compensation, 3.38% increase, and it's essentially in the same line as that. Happily, the town retirement was down a little bit. The proportion of the town retirement that's in this budget, remember that last year, we agreed with you that we would add to the staff costs that we moved over to, that we're always over at the Friends, we moved over the maintenance, all of the benefits, and those are, those are reflected in this budget as well. So we agreed to do that last year. It just automatically continues in this year, and it will until we discuss it. So that is essentially our budget. So the $87,438 increase is driven essentially by compensation. I've got other points in here, but I think you had a chance to look at it, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
So the line 11, the town retirement, you're talking about, is basically the moving of the benefits over to the Friends account?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, to be, sorry, last year, we did it already. The decrease this year is really just because the town retirement costs went down. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So we affected the, yeah, we affected the change of shifting the benefits to the Friends already last year.
I haven't had a chance to ask her about that yet. Sorry. It's okay. The other, noting was, the Eversource repayment, what was that all about? It's gone away.
Yes. We had, we took out an interest-free 40-month loan from Eversource to change over to LEDs. When we did that, we asked the Board of Finance, did they want to pay for it and get the benefit then? And they said, no, it's free interest. We're not idiots. Take it. So the problem was that Eversource, it was delayed a little bit, and it took us a while after we got this budget to get on the same page with Eversource as to when the loan was going to be done. So we had an original budget of $34,000, and then it went down to $17,000. And then it's, and so it's all gone now. So there are no more interest repayments.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure those are available anymore, but they sure were fantastic.
I hope they are.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I need them.
Mm-hmm.
And then, looking at page seven, which is opposing the various funding agencies.
Yeah.
So now I understand why you were cautious last year. You talked about the endowment, because you have some big capital projects that you're going to do. And I would like to know, when you finally get to your HVAC guy in, who it is, because we're going to have a project.
Oh, we met everyone in the New England region.
We'll come back to you to find out what you think.
Maybe we follow, we could literally, Alan, probably be helpful, just, we talked, and if you ever want geothermal, I think everybody in the Board now is an expert in geothermal. But we can go through and give you a list of both from a kind of advisors, consultants, and all this stuff.
Right. That'll be, that's for later. I just wanted to do that. But has your, has your fund also benefited by the market improvements? I know you used probably an average of about...
Three years.
Three years.
We did until December. And so, you know, it's, yeah, no, in down, we did not, we really didn't have any substantial gifts over the last almost two years. And so, but the market had been favorable, so we've really had, you know...
You were reasonably aggressive in your investment.
We were, it's really kind of a 60, 70, 30, you know, equity debt investment. So it's done about what the market did, which was great. And so it has been good.
Yeah. The functional effect on that is, on the Friends side, if we draw down $2 million from the endowment, and it's going to be a little bit more than that, that's about $100,000 less in income on the Friends side, in a budget of 1.3 million.
That's what they were dealing with as well.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah. When the big capital call comes in, you've got to do it.
Yes, absolutely. No question about it. It's good to have it there for that purpose.
Yeah.
Questions for the library? No?
Jack is not here, and I'm at 13. Just for my understanding, one of the headlines says adjusted budget. That's the adopted budget, right? It doesn't say adjusted budget 2018, 2019.
Yeah, the total is the same amount.
Right.
We just made some shifts in it to reflect the changes that we did.
And the library can do that on their own?
Yeah, we are a grant.
We give them a grant. We don't, they, you know, they tell us that this is how they're going to spend the money.
Right.
They don't have to.
Yeah. But just to finish that up, every year, by agreement with the Board of Selectment, about eight years ago, we agreed then to report to the Board of Finance what we did spend, what our original budget was, how we spent it. And we hold that meeting after audit is done. That was in December this time.
So if Jack asks about it, he was at the meeting.
Jack was there, John Zabrowski and Jamie was there.
The total amount doesn't shift around that much. It's usually if we have staffing changes, like we did this last year, things end up kind of...
Okay, thank you. And one more question. On the capital budget, does the town provide any cap, any money for the capital budget, or is it only coming from the Friends?
Never, not since 1963. And possibly before then. But when we built the original library in 1957, we did that with privately raised money. When we expanded it several times, we did that with privately raised money. We built our building with privately raised money. When we put in a generator, we did that with privately raised money.
So for capital, you only go to the Friends, and they will tell you what you can do?
That's right.
Yep, that's the Friends.
And they will then defeat the endowment to the extent of the capital project.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yep.
It should be said, though, that everything that you said was true, but it's important to remember, I think, that the Town of Darien bought the old library, which really, in my mind, I look at it as a capital contribution to the beautiful new library that we have.
No question about it. There was, there was the shift of assets, is the way we like to think of it, right? So you got a great asset. We got assets from you.
And then who does the depreciation on the asset? The town or the library?
On the, which asset?
On realistic depreciation.
On the new, their building?
Yes.
We do not own the building. That's their...
We own the building.
They own the building.
We're 501(c)(3) and own the building.
The new building.
So you do the depreciation on the building?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But you're going to think, they're really a separate entity. We're their largest donor.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Any other questions for the library?
It was helpful having this ahead of time.
Great, yeah, no, no, that's your initiative, and we appreciate it.
It's just helpful for us to be able to look at it, so that way if we did have questions.
We're reasonably quick learners.
Yeah.
No.
So just one comment. While it's appropriate to say that we're your largest donor, I would also point out that this is a public-private partnership of longstanding and of great value to the town.
Yeah. No, we're really, really proud of it.
Yep. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, Ed, you're up.
You can handle it?
I'm going to try. I don't have the entourage, I guess.
You could have run D.J.A.L.
We could.
You could have run D.J.A.L.
Kate, before you start on this one, on page 143, this one, this particular department has a whole bunch of transfers. Are there any significant transfers in here? Who has a new role on its return?
Let's see. I'd have to look at the individual lines. Probably not, because the bulk of the, so $37,000 was for the union contract settlement and wages.
Okay.
There's another $4,600 for the same purpose, another $17,000 for the same purpose.
You covered it. That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So during this fiscal year, we settled the Public Works Union Contract. So you see that reflected in those transfers.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So if you don't have any other comments or questions on the narratives...
Oh, on the narratives?
Well, I know some of you have had questions on things in the narrative, so before I, before I just barrel on, I'm going to give you a chance...
Well, I mean, when you talk about roadway maintenance, I'm sure you had to tell us how much is being, how much of the number is being covered by the gas company and other people.
Okay, so...
Okay, you won't.
So we can start on 153 is...
You want all this past year? About 90 grand.
About 90. That's great.
Yeah. Another 75 by the water company.
So the first part is the administrative part of the budget. And, you know, just to point out that we do allocate the costs for Ed and Darren and other members of the staff among the funds that he manages, so that includes sewer and parking. So you're not necessarily seeing their full salaries we've collected here. They are in other parts as well. There's no change here in programs. The one reduction, you see, in professional services. The Department proposed a slightly lower budget related to ongoing surveying and updating of right-of-way maps. If you want to go to roadway and walkway management...
Can I ask a question first on revenues? Have we really received no TARP money?
It goes into the capital.
That's what I thought.
We moved it into the capital fund back in 1617. We moved paving.
Yep.
We've received half of it so far? Yes.
So that hasn't gone away?
Right, not yet.
I know, I know.
You know.
Can we, is it, will you continue to reflect this here in Public Works revenue?
No, once the actuals drop off, that'll go away.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, go ahead. Okay. So a couple of things here in roadway and walkway maintenance. First, there are no new positions. This represents contractual increases. Let's see if I get this right. The overtime assumes seven storms at one and a half times, the one and a half time overtime rate, and 11 storms at double time.
We do happen to have a lot on weekends, it seems like, which is good about. I mean, it's good because you, the roads are probably easier to deal with, but we have...
The time after midnight to 7:00 in the morning is also double time for snow removal during the week.
Got it. So really, you should be praying for snow between 7:00 and 3:00? I learned that as a young child, you know.
Not at all. If you'd like to just give us zero, I'm okay with that.
I'm not pulling this stuff, are I?
No.
Yeah. That was, was it...
You're salty, all right.
Wait, really?
It was a squall.
Yeah. There's also funds in the overtime for street sweeping, paving, overtime, stuff like that. But the bulk of it is the winter storms. We've added funds for HVAC control software at the garage.
Gosh.
That's at $2,500, I'm sorry, $4,700 in software maintenance support. We have the increase in equipment repair maintenance. There's just, you know, looking through that, the cost of repair for some of our major equipment, like the loader, backhoe, the closet, all has started to go up.
And why wasn't it there in prior years? Why wasn't there a number for it?
It was part of facility repair and maintenance. We split the accounts out last year.
Okay.
Can I add a little bit?
Go ahead.
The larger plow trucks that we have have the special exhaust systems on them now that are in need of the repair. And those are the expensive pieces that have popped up the last, actually, the last couple of months, we just replaced two of them. So it's, it's, the parts that weren't going are now starting to be changed out. We've had some options on taking off exhaust stuff, and that's not what the state wants us to do. So we're going to comply with their exhaust requirements.
Ed, I don't think we asked you at the Department head meeting, and I meant to, now that we have had some storms and trucks have been loaded with salt that are inside, what's the vibe at the garage? Because it's a whole different world than it used to be, correct?
It's getting us out on the road a whole lot faster. That wash bay is, we're using it every day.
Are you really?
Yeah. I mean, with this weather, we have heaters, and as it closes the doors, we can wash the trucks out. We washed them all out this morning. We loaded two more up for this afternoon, and they'll get washed first thing in the morning. But it makes a big difference. Instead of trying to wash them out in front or in 20-degree weather, where everything's freezing, you can't de-ice it or desalt it when you're done. So we have that opportunity now to do that. So longevity is going to be something that we're going to enjoy.
Yeah, because we saw the damage it's all does. It's just incredible. Just incredible.
Do you have an idea how long tires last on a loader?
I change them every two years.
I figured you would have an idea, yeah.
Yeah. We have two large loaders. I know Parks and Rec, they have the two smaller John Deere ones. They last a little bit longer. They're usually not on the roadway surface, but ours are the one in the dump and the street loader that we have. They're on the asphalt surface a lot, and they wear quite quickly.
And he's replacing loader tires this year?
Yeah. So it'll be every other year, you'll see us come in. And we just brought a brand-new loader, so those tires won't be needed for another, another year.
Just a four grand here, Kate?
Yep. Notable decrease in motor fuel lubricants. We put the gasoline out to bid every year, but we got a very good price this year.
Is that one that you reduced?
That's one that I reduced.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
$12.5, yeah.
That was probably because we have that much bigger tank, too.
I'm not sure.
Less deliveries each year, I mean, less deliveries each week, right?
They base the bid on your overall usage. So you give my number, basically 75,000 gallons.
What was that?
The building's settling a little bit.
Sounds like it gets the window.
But the bids came in significantly lower than last year's unit price.
Yes.
For gasoline.
Mark, maybe you better come over here. Okay. Okay. That was all I had on that page. Then we have some revenues. Going to waste management. We have a reduction in overtime salary here. Last year, we had N3 out on a non-work-related sick leave that required backfill on overtime, so we do not expect that to be an issue this year. And changing the solid waste disposal, that's just rates times tonnage and smaller items. Those are just things based on what our actual needs are. I don't think any of those were my reductions.
On the revenue side, on page 155, it's small, but there were sale of textile recyclables, not budgeted this year?
Yes.
Not in the current year. Yeah, it wasn't budgeted. I think that must have been a new thing.
No, it was in the past.
No, we had history.
We had history? I don't know. Why then?
Okay. Not a big deal.
Maybe we thought there wasn't going to be a market last year.
That may have been me missing it last year. I really was...
You missing?
Ah, no.
I doubt it. I doubt it. To give a very good budget. Color-coded and all.
And I note that on the sale of recyclables, it's down appreciably from where it used to be, but that's basically...
The market has gone away.
It's classic. When China put up the barrier, that was it.
We also did a renegotiation of their contract back in 17, I believe, where we took the unit price for recyclables at $15 a ton, and we reduced it to $7.50. So our revenue went down. It should have gone to half, but we are above the halfway mark, if you will. The tonnage is up.
The tonnage is up, right.
Yeah. What they also reduced, though, was the operating costs that they were charging us, and the per ton for MSW. So within two years now, we're actually back breaking even, and we'll continue to see a revenue stream, small as it may be, but the prediction is that we'll see it. We are one of the very few towns that still makes money off their recycling. Stanford got hit quite hard. Norwalk is about to. One of the reasons is I don't think our recycling stream is as large as some of these other towns and cities. So the city carding has been taking ours. They also say our recyclables right now are one of the more pristine material that keeps coming. So it was interesting to hear your discussion about the waste baskets. We take great care on what we don't allow into recyclables up there. The two gentlemen that are up there every day make sure that happens.
Are you seeing people accommodating the ending of plastic film going into the signal stream? Are you seeing people using the bins now?
We've placed some bins up there to take them, so we're seeing that being used more. They're dumping them out. There's still a few that come through. Some of the haulers that do pick up recycling at houses, we've had a couple of discussions with them, too, because some of their material is coming in in plastic bags. But it is getting better, and like I said, the city carding does hold us as one of the higher and better towns with regards to the condition of our recyclables when they come out.
We have good trash. So to your point, though, Kate, is twenty-eight thousand dollars in expected revenue still overly aggressive compared to actuals and the marketplace? Even though you cut it, Kate?
I... No, that's... That wasn't my cut. I really didn't touch much in terms of revenue. But if you look at year-to-date, we were at, you know, a little bit under thirteen, so I think twenty-eight is achievable.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Can't get much worse than China.
And we had talked about, were we going to look to increase the tipping fees this year, or...
That's something we have to look at.
So we'll need to have a discussion before selecting about increasing tipping fees and permits.
Yes. I have one question. If they don't have the tag sale of the scout cabin, what would happen to our MSW?
I think there'd be a heavy discussion from some of the folks in the slot shop to put an addition on so they could sell furniture. I've been dancing with that one over there. They'd like to... A bigger place, they'd like to put out bigger furniture. I just... I feel it's a safety issue. I feel some of those things are quite heavy and quite large. Also, it's the turnover. I need to make sure that the material there keeps moving. So those big pieces that go sometimes at the Boy Scouts' tag sale will end up in C and D, and we'll be paying more in construction debris that's worth the on the.
Yeah. There's a couple of implications, actually, because we do receive truckloads of things from the tag sale that aren't sold. So that's... Part of it is still coming. You might see an uptick in big trash pickup scheduling requests.
Bulky ways pickup, sure. Which is, I think, is a great... Scheduling, it is... Actually, makes it easier for us to do.
That was a great change.
It was a big change, and it keeps things clean and neat and out there for a short period of time. So I see the Boy Scout tag sale as like a stopover. You know, before you bring it to the dump, you're actually stopping, maybe somebody will buy it. If not, it's going to come into the transfer station.
Okay. All right, so we talked about the expense side of that. We go to page one fifty-eight. On one fifty-seven, we have revenues related to renting the town hall. We do, you know, art center. That's what... Okay. Then one fifty-eight is the management of the buildings. So this is where the employee that was transferred out of Parks and Rec appears. Obviously, it's not an increase in the budget, but that's where the transfer happened.
It was a shared deal, wasn't it?
No.
Was it completely...
We had... For personnel reasons, we had to remove the person from Parks and Rec, and we gave him to Ed. You know, we assigned him to Ed's department. It has allowed us to do a lot of maintenance work in this building. You know, this is a ninety-three-year-old building. It's settling still. But it has allowed us to do a lot of maintenance in this building that we would not have been able to do otherwise. It's allowed Dave Sabini, our facility mechanic... I think that's his actual title, to do some of the more major work that in the past we've hired outside firms to come in and do. Dave's been able to do that. If we didn't have this person added to Public Works, Dave would have had to do that kind of work, and we would have had to outsource some of the other work. So I do believe we should keep it. But that is a decision that you all have to make.
Remind me of when that shift was made?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, okay. So I have to go back into my book. Was it reflected in the...
It was January of seventeen. So you see the jump from fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen?
Yeah.
Well, actually, there was a much bigger jump from sixteen, seventeen to seventeen, eighteen.
It would have been because it was partial.
Right.
And then going to a full. We're adding some software here for management of the town hall, HVAC. I think it's hoping to get less phone calls from people saying, you know, "Too hot, too cold."
This was a lot more stable than in years past at night.
Yeah, we've upgraded the... They really did the upgrade, and we're just touching it up right now from the new software. We're in the process of getting it balanced a whole lot better.
And then, you know, the next line down, facility repair and maintenance, that's just representing less cost for HVAC and repairs and electrical system repairs due to the ability to do more in-house.
Great.
I have nothing else here.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
This covers all of this building, Mather Center, right?
Yes.
This budget?
Yeah.
And seven oh one? And emergency maintenance over at the police department, because David overtime will come out of this. And the DPW garage, his work over there.
Got some of the revenue related to parking on the next page. Remember, we split this between the general fund and the parking fund based on who owns the lots. On page one sixty, we have the town share of parking fund expenditures. Does include the professional services as credit card fees. I'm not sure why there was no budget last year, even though there were expenditures. It's no removal of the town-owned parking lots, facility maintenance at the town-owned lots. No change in the program. Do you want to touch on sewer and parking or go to Ed's Capital? Where do you want to go next?
Why don't we go to Capital first?
Let's see, fifty-six is the start of Ed's Capital. So the first couple of items are ongoing reserves, the equipment replacement reserve by those loaders, dump trucks, snow piles. We are trying to run all of our equipment reserves in a manner similar to the fire truck replacement that, you know, you've been used to for years, trying to level off what we fund every year so that the impact on the taxpayers is minimal. So in a year where you might have to spend a lot, we've built it up so that we don't have big fluctuations up and down. So that's if you see, if you look out into the future years, it's a very steady, steady number. Next line down, sidewalk rehabilitation. I don't know if you have anything specifically planned that you want to highlight, Ed, on that one.
We have an ongoing list that we've been pulling off of where we've kind of been matching the pedestrian infrastructure report and working around the school areas. We've been doing some of the work on state roads, some on town roads. We've been trying to spread it throughout the town so that we don't just focus on one area. So we have some other places that we're going to be doing right now. We're down on Token Eek by the school down there, trying to expand from out there, make some connections to some new sidewalk we just did on Token Eek Road. There's some work I want to do and I want to plan to do in conjunction with the Middlesex Middle School and the two developments. When they come in and do one side of West Avenue, if there's no other funding source, I want to be ready to do the other side, because then I want to come through and I want to pave it as part of the gas project, I want to finish this up. So there's... Those are those things I'm trying to line up right now and trying to put money in place to get it done.
They have a period of time to... You can't do the gas line yet, yeah?
Eighteen months. So two thousand twenty, I should be able to pave if appropriate. And I don't believe I'm going to want to out there, because they're going to be doing... In that block, anyway, they're going to be doing work.
All kind of work, yeah, right.
And again, I'm not sure where the gas company's going to go with another phase, but I'd like to hear about the local neighborhoods. Off of West Avenue, we did hear something about the post road down in the Seagate area.
Yep. The next item is the townwide paving. That cost is somewhat offset by the town aid road grant from the state to market. So we can continue to get that. How many miles? Is that four miles, Ed?
We shoot for a minimum of four. I think this previous year, I did four point four or something like that.
The amount of miles we can get would be dependent on what the asphalt price turns out to be.
Many contributions from utility companies seem to...
Right, this number we have here, nine oh two, does not include what the utilities will do.
Yeah.
No. That's extra.
Okay.
The next line is a tree replacement program, similar to Parks and Rec. We regularly replace the trees around town, ones that we own. Then the town hall generator. We need a little money... More money to get that project done.
Oh, my goodness, I feel like this is another one.
That's like the...
We're having ribbon cutting.
Yeah, that's like the renovation of the offices down there, those two things.
I know. I... You know. We are going to get there, though.
And why do we need an additional fifty thousand?
We are working with EverSource and as part... And working with the solar project altogether.
Yep.
Part of it required that we build a new room down there to include all the switchgear and stuff for the generator. What we found out was we could do some elimination of their transformers that are in the vault underneath the building and use that as our room. So we didn't have to build anything. I got EverSource to meet with us and work with us to remove generators, put a new transformer in. We're going to upgrade the service. That's the addition. That starts with additional costs, starts coming in. But the switchgear's a little bit more expensive. But we're going to actually clean up that end of the building, get the old transformers out from underneath our building, use that area for our switchgear, so I'm not taking space away from that corner offices that were down there. So it was kind of a win-win for us. But it also allows us to actually finish the outside when we're done with the generator, too, with proper fencing trees. We're going to have to excavate and drop it down a little bit lower. We did find the cost for natural gas for that size generator, instead of going with two, we went with one, was cost prohibitive to go natural gas. So we're going to have to go diesel. We are going to take the tank and drop it down so that you won't see any more height-wise than what's out there right now. But we are going to enclosures, so it's acceptable as far as inappropriate for what it looks like inside the building. We're going to screen it properly.
So it's the cost of the equipment that's prohibitive?
When we take the service for this building and upgrade it to just one service, there's two right now. It turns out to be a 2,000 amp service, and the switchgear's become a little bit more expensive. The room and the way we have to close it off with doorways, that becomes a little bit more expensive. That wasn't in the original quote to do it.
No, I was talking about the reason why you're going to diesel versus natural gas.
The cost was about a hundred thousand dollar difference.
Wow, okay. For the equipment?
For just the generator alone.
Okay.
And that didn't include us running... Us ourselves running the line across the building, though we prepped for it. It just... It was another twenty-five grand in piping and material and digging.
But did you look at the cost of natural gas payback in relation to the initial capital investment?
It's such a small usage that the load pulling on natural gas in comparison to your diesel
Got it.
is very minimal.
Okay. Bummer.
You have to get a big cat... You have to get a big caterpillar.
To put it in?
No, no, for the generator.
Generator, it's a Kohler.
Oh, it's a Kohler?
Yeah. Three hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Okay.
For that, is there an original project plan that now has to be amended as to the amounts and the timing?
Amended with...
For the generator.
But I'm not sure you mean... What do you mean by amended with...
Well, if it's more money that is needed.
There's more money that's needed, so there's appropriation existing, and we're asking to add to it.
Right, okay. So but there's a project plan originally, it assumed less money would be spent than now is needed.
Yes.
So and there's got to be some kind of timing of when the money's needed. And I mean, it could be that the money is needed earlier than in the next budget cycle.
I would say not.
Planning on doing the construction after the money's appropriated in July and preferably before December.
Yeah.
Nothing has happened yet on the project?
No, nothing has happened, gentlemen.
And so does that set us back that it's more money? We're waiting for the next budget cycle?
No, it does not.
It doesn't?
No.
Okay, that's it.
Because we're working with EverSource and getting... Putting meetings together sometimes could be a little trying with regards to schedule. So our meetings have been stretched out a little bit. But we've been able to get them to the table so that we could come up with a final plan and a final estimate, and we're tweaking those final designs right now.
The next item is our local share that we need to put up to design modifications to build a new rotten leg intersection. This is very important because this gets us in the line for lots of funds to do the construction work.
Very dysfunctional intersection. Now, we should make sure that we say that allocating these funds right now doesn't mean that the project will happen within the next year. There's a pretty long process and funding availability cycles through Westcog for the lots of money. But as part of that process, we have to appropriate this money so that we can continue to move forward in the lots of money process.
There's an opportunity for us to get in line and get the funds before someone else yet.
Pay to plan.
We did have an opportunity to speak with Kevin from Westcog. He gave us a couple of bullet points and things we had to address, and we're working on those things right now.
Good.
The next line item is new sidewalks. And again, really, the area of priorities are schools and the train stations. I don't know if you have anything specific.
The two new sidewalk locations, we're working on plans for Edgerton, and we're working on plans for Mansfield Avenue from Overbrook to Mansfield Place, I believe. Those are the two target ones right now.
And would this be Edgerton from Elm to West?
Yes.
Yes.
And I have money in the sidewalk rehab to continue and finish that all the way up to Middlesex. When we do one, we'll continue and finish the rest.
Perfect.
The next item is to replace the windows in the town hall gym. Any of you... I don't know that any of you have spent much time in there, but the windows are old, they're, we have leaks, we have cracks, the sills are rotting and I think some of it's a safety issue. It's also heating cost, heating issue. Doing this project will help us save on energy costs. This is just a portion of it. It's, we have quite a lot of work to do in there.
What's the total?
Oh, 250, 50. We've got it phased out over multiple years.
And that's from one estimate, from one contractor. I'm guessing when we, if and when we do put this out to bid, the prices will be better, but I had to put a number in that I, I had on paper.
Do we have any abatement issues in this one?
I won't know until I get up there and even, we want to get up and inspect the, the southern-facing windows seem to be the ones that have the most issues with framing around it right now and cracking.
Do you have any idea how old they are?
I couldn't even guess, couldn't even venture a guess.
Just because they're 93 years old? No.
Maybe they didn't even have PCBs in caulking back then.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, I know.
The next item is to replace carpeting here in town hall. We have some tripping hazards and so we need to address it. It's a risk issue, safety issue.
You've been working our way through the building, certain of the offices and this number here is now is for the hallways.
And then I think last but not least, the stairway from the circle down to the lower front lot is deteriorating and really in need of repair and I think it needs to be done.
It's also a safety issue.
It's a safety issue. You know, one of the things I complain about probably on a daily basis are the people who line up in the fire lane, park their cars in the fire lane to drop people off for classes in the gym or the, the dance room rather than parking down below. You know, it's a problem, but those stairs are not in the greatest shape. So if we're pushing people, me, if I'm pushing people to park down below and walk up, we should get those stairs in better shape.
We'll, we'll make sure they're well led as well, yes?
Yes, I expect so.
Yes.
Okay. And trees?
Trees, yeah, trees were, I don't know why the page is in the back, but the trees were high, $5,000.
Is there capital for the floor, for the gym, for the Parks and Rec to get the floor done?
Oh, yeah.
I think I put that in now.
I saw. Gymnasium, yeah.
I did read it today.
Why do I think that's some under the town hall?
Maybe it's under page.
Yes, that's what it is. It's on page, yeah. Page two.
Two?
Right.
Yeah, town hall renovation, gym floor resurfacing, page three.
On the town hall renovation reserve. $6,000 to resurface the floor of the gym.
And the HV mechanicals are in that same account?
Yes.
Or the other account, I'm sorry.
The other account. And there's also funds in, let's see, in the town hall renovation reserve to repair the doors that are, or replace, I'm sorry, the doors. When you go over the ramp, the doors outside the gym, we need to put a handicap door in there. It is, if, one of the capital things that I proposed, which I guess we can discuss when we're talking about my budget, putting security on our town hall doors to secure the access to the back doors that are typically used by employees. We'd make them accessible only by like a key card or punch code entry. Locking the other doors, right now we're very porous building, too many doors are open. So those doors over by the gym, the front doors and the front door to Mathers Center would be the only ones open to the public going forward to try and boost the security of this building.
So you center?
That's the front door to the Mathers Center.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be open and then the one here by the gymnasium, which allows people access to the second floor of the Mathers Center and to the gym, to the fire marshal's office.
I was just thinking, if you, if you, if you have access to the Mathers Center, you have access to the whole building?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yes.
This is a high priority item for the health and safety committee of the town hall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so sewer? Sewer has it done now. We go to 232. Really this, I would say the whole sewer budget is, there's not a lot of changes from current operations, no personnel changes. The big nut here is always what does Stanford charge us?
A little bump in billing and collection services?
That is us, charging us.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, we, we charge the sewer fund for finance department's work on the behalf of the sewer fund for the tax collector's office work, collecting the sewer operation charges. So yes. I charge everything I could possibly do to that. Ed, do you want to touch on the sewer, Stanford or?
Uh, no, not really.
It's not very often Ed says no.
We've been, we've been meeting since August, once every other week. We skipped a couple sessions in there and we had some, a good last session about three weeks ago. We're going to meet again Friday of this week, but you know, they, the easy part was them asking for the additional crossings to be included because, well, they, they really should be. Getting down into the charges and what items are included in the WPCA of Stanford's budget that should be charged back to Darien, that's, that's where we're having it.
Always been a difficult, difficult discussion.
Yeah, and I guess, I have to say the only good part of it is me reviewing their budget is I've, I've seen it before and it was easy to sit and talk about it. So now they're just coming back with justifications for some of the items that I've asked for. You know, we'll, we'll continue to work. I think there was a, there was a, sorry, a request to have access to the pump station so they could inspect them and that was denied and there was access, they like access for read-only for all the crossings, instantaneous live readings that they could get wireless and we're not going to give that to them either. Just things that the sewer commission felt were a little too intrusive.
Excuse me, Ed, what's a crossing?
We have connections that go from Darien to Stanford that will make its way all the way to the treatment plant. We don't just have one, we have, we have right now five of them.
So you're talking about the pipes where Kwong is pumping Darien into their...
Well, I'm thinking of like, you know, the, the reef beach.
The near water.
Yeah, near water.
And we have another one at Brookside Pump Station. We have a crossing at Holmes Avenue.
Okay, that's enough, thank you.
Couple more, as you go up New York River, we have to cross under the river and tie into their system. Optimistic that we'll finish before July 1st, but we're going to take it slow and easy and we'll take our wins when we can. I mean, we had a good meeting last time and, you know, we walked out thinking, okay, when we come back, we have some more stuff to talk about.
So on page 236, sewer fund also reimburses the general fund for debt service paid on sewer fund's behalf and it transfers, the operating fund transfers to the sewer capital fund to fund the ongoing sewer capital projects. So you see on page 237, the capital projects planned for next year, chemical root control ongoing project and pump replacement program, which has been an ongoing project.
And to be honest, be quite successful. We've done three big stations so far. I started with the two biggest, now I'm working my way down. We're overworking on Seagate right now, working on the eneasement with the YMCA also where, which is where our controls sit. They need it to be above the flood hazard line so they're on their property as an easement while the pumps are down at the, the intersection of Seagate and the two dead ends that come through. So we're working on that one right now and as we finish that, we'll, we'll move to the next one. But a lot of them needed, you know, need a little bit of care and we're going to try to plan that out, kind of like replacing the equipment for my DPW group with equipment, keeping it kind of steady. It's the same thing I'm trying to do here with the pump replacements and the pump upgrades.
The Kronk and sewer, we can go to parking. Has its own little tab. We'll start with parking administration. See on the revenue, we are planning to draw down the fund balance in the parking operations fund to help fund more capital because we have some capital upcoming. In the administration budget, that is primarily the receptionist and these accounts are all related to the issuance of the parking permits or parking tickets. The overhead is similar to what we charge the sewer operations fund. They're paying back the general fund for work that finance department or the departments do on their behalf. Then we've got parking, the revenues from the permits. The parking operations and management, that's our, our parking managers. There's really nothing remarkable, no big changes in this budget except for the transfer to other funds that, which is funding the parking capital.
Sorry, funding the parking?
Parking capital.
Does the state ever challenge you on the upgrade allocations?
No.
One number you should look at, electricity where it's dropped about 4%. We did some LED replacements out there, so we're seeing some benefits of doing that.
Train stations?
Parking lots.
Parking lots.
Yeah.
Do you have any other planned upgrades in the parking lots in the next few years?
We have, I've hit a lot of the small ones already with touch-ups to granite curbing and repaving Center Street, North Mechanic Street, so I've done those. We have some, some work coming at Neuroton Heights soon on the north side with the station and maybe a plan to do some relocation parking and some sidewalks there. I'd like to plan to do some on the south side too. Darien, I, it's kind of a, it's, I don't, I don't know what to do with that station other than to repave it, so there may be some modifications there later, but it seems to, other than, you know, people that park in the travel lane that shouldn't be there, everything else seems to, to work well over there.
Do we have enough lighting in Leroy East?
I just re-planned two of the lights over there. Got power finally to the, the big Cobra head light that hadn't had it for a couple years.
All right.
So, yeah, I think we do now.
Okay. Put a Starbucks hut in Leroy West so that people park in the back of that one?
I don't know what I would do with the Metro North guys.
So on page 253, we have the listing of the parking capital. The notable thing there, I'd say, you know, we have some drainage improvements we want to do in Neuroton Heights. It's planning to put pay station, put enclosures over the pay stations to protect them from the accidents and I am hoping to get a new parking permit system. What I've looked at is a system that would eliminate the hang tags.
Yes.
It would also allow us to do electronic chalking in the merchant lots. So the talking means, you know, they go through and, you know, we're only supposed to be there for two hours, you know, they would mark your tire and if you're still there two hours later, you know, you get the ticket. So this would eliminate needing to actually physically chalk a tire. It would do it electronically by the plate readers. It would also get us onto one system for permit issuance and enforcement, which I think would improve matters, but I think the biggest thing is looking to eliminate those hang tags. One of the things we run into a lot is, you know, we let people put four vehicles on their permit and they forget to put the tag in the car. So they get a ticket and then we have to void the ticket. Or they complain, well, why can't you know that, you know, my car is okay, just because I, you know, forgot the permit, why don't you know that my car is okay and automatically when I put the second one in, that it's not okay? This system would actually allow us to do that, so. I think would be a good service to our partners.
I agree.
Have the readers been successful in being accurate this time?
They, it's a higher level of a reader, so they should be more accurate, but we, you know, we still need to have some meetings with the, the company before we go down the path. Because I know that is one of the problems we have with the, with the current system.
Right. The, does Connecticut require a license by the front and the back?
Yes, Connecticut requires a license plate on the front and the back.
Even though many people don't think.
Even though people don't believe that.
Or they say their dealer tells them they don't.
And their dealers are wrong. And, you know, be grateful for the parking ticket you get from our rangers for not having your plate visible because the parking ticket you would get from a police officer would be much more expensive. Our regulations do now require you to be compliant with the laws in your state, so your front plate, if you're backing into a parking spot, your front plate needs to be visible in addition to your hang tag being visible.
But with this new system, that eliminates that whole hang tag issue.
It eliminates the hang tag issue, but it doesn't eliminate the people who don't have a front license plate.
Correct.
Some people like to back into their space, just to back into the space.
Is New York State a two?
Yeah, it's a two-state, two-plate state.
And Massachusetts?
Yep.
Two plates. Okay.
Okay.
We get them from Utah, believe it or not.
Sorry?
We get them from Utah, believe it or not.
We get them from all sorts of places, yeah. Okay. Bert, question?
Yeah, I'm still confused with the $500,000 flowing through. Can we get more in the narrative on that? There's nothing in the narrative.
It's, well...
For people to understand where it's coming from and, you know, where it's going to.
It's, when we are, when we are preparing the parking operating budget, we assume that the parking permit fees and other revenues will provide a certain amount of revenue to support the expenses, but this year we are assuming that they will not completely support it. We're going to need $500,000 from fund balance because we're starting to transfer more money into the capital fund, which is a requirement of our, our lease. We do have to transfer money from the operating to the capital every year, but because we anticipate some large expenditures out of the parking capital fund in the next couple of years, we are looking at a redesign of the station building at Neurot Heights and that parking area. So we're moving money into the capital fund in anticipation of having to pay for those, that project.
So it's not a flow-through? They happen to be supposed $500,000 or so, but they are not directly related?
It, it's not directly related, it's not, not yet, no. It's, we're, we're moving money from one fund to the other because we expect, rather than doing it all at once, you know, in three years, we're starting to move it over now. Any other questions for Ed, Parking, Sewers, Public Works?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes.
On page 63, at the capital project, you press the sidewalks.
New or rehab?
This is for the-
That's new, that's the new ones.
You know, this is the new ones.
Yeah.
Is that in connection with what is in the 10-year plan for rehabilitation and development? Does any of that have to do with what the PIAC people did? Or is that something that is done in the same amount over a very long period of time? Where's the $200,000 coming from?
You mean, what's the revenue source, or where did the number?
Why do we say $200,000? Why do we say $500,000?
Right, yep. The 200, the number is to keep it a steady funding, generally to keep it a steady funding. But how many feet of sidewalk does $200,000 get us?
Are we talking new or sidewalk rehab?
New, yeah.
Then I'm only asking for 200 for this year.
Right.
Which we have, I ask for a steady every year to continue projects going.
So you might not ask for new sidewalks?
The 200 is, is the estimates for the two locations.
For that specific site, okay.
Yeah. I usually try to, that and I have another set for commercial sidewalk. I usually have estimates for those projects because they're one-offs.
So it's coincidence that the sidewalk rehab and the new sidewalks are the same amount?
That's correct.
And just to add a little more color to that, so Ed has been working off of a list of recommended new sidewalk locations that have been sort of backlogged since even probably before the PIAC did their work. And then we know that there's going to be new sidewalks required in conjunction with all of the new developments, some of which will likely match up with the recommendations from the PIAC. And then you might have heard in my state of the town that I'm hoping that we can get to a point where we can do a master sidewalk plan that can help feed into the new sidewalk plan for Ed as he, as he needs to, you know, repopulate his list of new sidewalk locations with the priority being walking student safety and serving our, our commercial centers that haven't been taken care of by the private developers. And so I just, that, the PIAC report will become critically important as we try and make those longer-term sidewalk plans.
Thank you. Another question on page 152, on the revenues for the Public Works Management and Engineering, there are no year-to-date figures. Is that because it's so highly seasonal that money has come in, or so volatile that it doesn't make sense to show any figures year-to-date? Page 152.
Yeah, we, those are things that happened at year-end. Those are-
Nothing has happened?
Nothing's happened. Those are typically, those are journal entries, really, and we typically don't do them until the end of the year.
I didn't miss that one. That wasn't me. Doesn't get done.
Any other questions for Ed? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you very much for having me.
You're welcome.
All right. So we, why don't we go on to employee benefits and risk management? And then we can discuss whether we want to do police tonight or Monday.
So, I got good news.
Oh, I like good news.
Page 213, medical insurance. The budget was using an estimate of a 12% increase in premiums. We got word today that our premium increase will be 7.2%.
Ooh.
Okay. So we're going to wait a little bit till contracts, union contracts have been approved. We'll at least wait till the town hall. They're voting tonight or tomorrow night?
Tonight.
I think they're, so they probably have already voted. And police will be voting on theirs in early March. But assuming the contracts are approved, the premium share for the employees will also be increasing, thus decreasing our obligation. So we'll give you new numbers next week.
Sorry, seven, seven and a half, seven?
Seven point two.
Seven point two.
So if we did a rough, uh, number to take the revised budget, hit it by 7.2, that's our increase.
Yeah.
Right now, until we have all the other, realize our other priorities.
But yeah, this, you know, this reflects that the increased personnel position, so can't quite do it off the revised budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sort of just fall apart.
Other things I would highlight on here, the pension fund contributions for the town, the police, those are all based on the actuarial valuations.
So is that basically performance, or we didn't change?
It's a combination of performance, and they always make assumptions for wage increases.
Right.
And this was not a full valuation year, so they're just doing a roll-up of, an assumption of wage increases and investment earnings.
So we did, I know we didn't change our discount rate.
Right, we didn't change, yeah.
No, okay. So that's good?
Yeah, it is good.
Very good. And that's how the library got their reduction, too?
Yes, yes. The other item of note there is the accrued leave redemption.
Good.
So with several of our bargaining units or employee groups, we're obligated to pay unused vacation at termination. And with some of them were also obligated to pay their unused sick leave if they have a certain balance over a certain amount when they retire. That's different if you just terminate, but don't retire, you don't get the payout. So we've been, you know, trying in negotiations to get some of it reduced. Right now, the town hall, the public works, and the non-reps are allowed to accrue or carry balances up to two years' worth of their earnings. So somebody who earns three weeks of vacation can carry over six weeks every year. We'd like to start reducing that liability, because it is a liability to the town, because you're going to pay it out when they terminate.
At the rate, at the rate they're being paid then.
At the rate they're being paid when they terminate. So they might have earned it at, you know, one rate, and it's getting paid much later.
I have to, sorry, I just want to know, as you said, they're allowed to carry over how much?
Two times their annual accruals, so-
Accruals.
Of vacation. So somebody who earns three weeks-
Two years' worth.
Two years' worth of earning, of vacation accruals.
That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
Okay, I thought you mean it's a, it's a build and build and build.
No, so nobody, nobody ever earns more than five weeks a year, so the max you can carry is 10.
Right.
But still.
That's a lot of weeks.
That's a lot of weeks. And, and so here's the fun part, you know, I've thought about this myself. That's what you can carry at June 30. Theoretically, if you earn five weeks, so if I were to carry 10 weeks this June, I earned five weeks during the year next year. If I don't take a single vacation day, if I retire in late June, I could have 15 weeks on the books. Okay?
Last year.
You can't, you can't leave until after July 1. No way, I'd say.
We'd like to start addressing that. We'd like to start, you know, we'd like to have some funding available so that we can, with Human Resources Finance Department, work on addressing these liabilities that continue to grow. But the reality is that we can't just say to people, we're taking all your vacation time away from you.
But can you, can you, can you change the policy so that they can't carry you?
With non-represented employees, we could, we could do that. With the unions, we have to negotiate.
We'd have to give something to get that.
And Kate, do we have somewhere, some ballpark estimate of how many weeks?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do.
We have to calculate it every year for the audit.
Yeah, yes. We have to, it's, if you look in the audit report under, under the long-term debt, there's a line for compensated absences. It includes all of us, all the Board of Ed, whatever. You know, like basically, if we had ceased business at June 30, what would we have had to pay out to people?
Right. So it's a, it's a smart thing to contemplate.
Yes.
What I don't like, the idea of, is taxing our residents for that. Is there another source of funding that the Board of Finance would consider moving into a, you know, some kind of a fund, like from, from fund balance, let's say?
I think with, if we raise the issue and if you put this forward in your budget proposal, I think that will, it brings it to the table, and they could consider doing that, yes.
Okay.
And I think that would be a fine way to do it.
I do, too.
It's a, it's a one-time payout, and then changing the rules for the non-represented employees, right?
You know, we'd have to look exactly what we do, you know, we haven't discussed this with employees or anything. But I don't think you're going to get away ever from all payouts, but you could limit the payout. You could reduce our liability.
Right, you could limit, you're going to carry over so many years, weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yep.
After you pay them?
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever happens to use or lose it?
Yes, question?
So if we're going to effectively prepay these payouts, right, you're not going to do any prepayments until you've negotiated the change in the ability to carry over, right?
Well, we would, we would have to establish a new policy. So we'd have to negotiate it with the unions. With the non-reps, it would be a matter of the Board of Selectmen establishing a policy that, you know, effective at this point, this is, this is how much you can carry over, and we will, you know, here's our policy for paying down what you have.
So this amount is sort of contingent upon your ability to actually negotiate those changes?
This does not contemplate negotiating the changes with the unions.
It's for non-represented people, so it doesn't?
And it, it's a portion of the potential liability.
All right, so the debt, the total liability is maybe a bit bigger.
Yes, right.
That's kind of a-
I was just trying to get, I just wanted to get in a situation where, you know, you've prepaid them this year, and then two years away, they've got another six weeks built on.
So the increase in the benefits is largely driven by increase in medical insurance, which is typical for anybody.
Yes.
So is that a planned number, or is that what we know based on the current contract?
The medical insurance?
Yes.
That, the number that's in there now was an estimate based on our current, our current contract of a 12% increase in our premiums.
So the contract expires, expires in March?
The medical insurance contract?
Yes.
No, June, July 1st.
July 1st.
Right.
That's a different contract than we have for the teachers.
We are not associated with them for that.
Okay, we don't, we don't negotiate the contracts together?
No, we don't.
Okay. And is there any indication, have they, you know, how do we come up with such a big jump? Because everyone else says medical costs are going up, or?
It's based on our experience.
Okay. Or have they given us any indication what this, what the new number's going to be like?
Seven, the increase in our rate is 7.2%.
Okay.
So that, those numbers that you see in the book will be adjusted to reflect the actual renewal?
So what we've done, the way, the way this budget is built, is we look at each and every employee and the coverage that they have chosen. So at level, they're single, two-person, family, what those rates are going up. We look at the people who have turned down coverage and that get a buyout, and what that is worth. And, and then we take the premium, the indications of what our premium increase will be, come up with the budget. We add in any new employees that have been requested, and, and that gets the proposed budget. We found out today that our premium increase will be less than we had estimated. So we'll knock that out. We have two contracts that have been recently, we've gotten a tentative agreement that changes the plan slightly, and it changes the premium share balance between the town and the employees. So we'll be reducing this budget if those contracts are ratified by the unions. We'll be reducing it.
And we have a big saving in fiscal '16, '17. Is that when we switched insurance companies?
That is likely when we, we went to the HSA, the high deductible plan with the health savings account.
We stayed with the same insurance, but maybe just have a different structure?
Yes.
But that depends on the agreement with the unions to be able to do something like that.
The structure, yes. The company, no. We have the right to change companies. But the structure of the plan is a negotiated item.
Okay.
Okay, are we good on that page? The revenue insurance recoveries, that, that has to do with, it can be workers' comp, it can be, it can be accidents. It has to do with the timing of when a claim occurs versus when the insurance payment received. That's a very volatile account. You really can't look at past history to assume anything. So when it comes to the, the next page is the liability and property and workers' comp. Our rates are going down. So the premiums are a factor of the rate and the values. So we're holding this basically flat because our rates are going down. But like workers' comp, payroll goes up, so even with a flat rate, your premium will go up. So our rates are going down, so we're holding this flat. Same thing with liability and property. Our, our rates are going down, but the values of the property, because they'd look at replacement values, the values of the vehicles, those go up. So we're holding everything basically flat to the current year.
Do you ever calculate workers' comp insurance as a percentage of wages overall?
It's difficult to do that. I, well, I, you could, you could, but it's really difficult to do that because we have such a wide variety of the rates, you know.
No, I just didn't know whether it was, where they were looking at.
Then the last page there is the set aside. So that salary set aside includes right now non-reps, part-timers, and two years' worth of increases for the town hall union and the police union. Because their contract expired June, both of their contracts expired June of 2018.
And you're referring to the 157 number, or are you referring to the budgeted number?
I'm referring to the proposed 401,000.
400, okay.
The 157 is the transfer that was made for the Public Works contract increases and the non-rep and part-time increases during the year.
Okay.
Board of Finance contingency at 400,000, it's been at $400,000 for as long as I can remember. And it's been a reasonable number. So we're not proposing any increase.
Have they used it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We generally, you know, we've used all of it.
Okay.
Where do we see what they've used?
When, from the adopted to the revised budget is, in the current year, what has been taken out. But to see what they've used in the past year, we have to have-
I can give you a report of prior years.
Okay, I'd be curious.
Yeah.
So they've literally used $3,000?
So far this year.
So far this year.
Through December.
Yeah.
I think we may have had one or two more small transfers.
I think the policeman was 25.
That was capital.
It was happening, yeah.
So based on historic analysis, do we still feel like we need $400,000 here? Without seeing the, I guess I'd like to see the report.
I think we need to do the analysis, but-
So I think, in the time that I've been here, they have not fully used contingency. But in the few years prior to that, they were using it fully.
Okay. The board made a push a couple of years ago, I think it was, you know, maybe my last year in finance, that if you want to transfer during the- last year in finance, that if you want to transfer during the year, find it in your budget.
Okay.
And employees did, or department heads did a really good job of trying to do that. And it tends to be used, I think, for the bigger things like the overtime overruns that you couldn't expect or the legal expenses.
Sure.
That you didn't anticipate. So it would be interesting to see that analysis of the last several years and where we've been able to make up the funds. If we didn't use contingency, where did those mon, monies come from?
I think the other thing to keep in mind with contingency is, as we went through this budget, we identified a lot of numbers that were being carried just in case.
Yeah.
And we've tried to eliminate those, so if those do come to fruition, we would be going to contingency more often, but that's what it's there for.
Okay.
Right, because one of the problems with having, not using your contingencies, everybody starts to build their own.
Yes.
And all of a sudden you have a padded, swollen budget.
Right.
Which then gets used for who knows what. Okay. So it's much better to have a tighter budget and then have this contingency be the safety valve.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
One question.
I have just one question.
Yes.
Actually being called in by Jack. He's watching. The way back to the unfunded vacation, the liability issue. The question is, what do other towns do? What does the county do? Do we have an idea?
So, not to interrupt you, but I just saw on Channel 12 News, and Kate, I don't know if you saw this, but you can certainly correct me. I want to say the police chief in Bridgeport...
Yeah, sent Kate that.
$171,000 was his payout, if I'm not mistaken, of unused...
It is, it is not at all unusual to have payouts of, of compensated absences at termination. I think our, our policy in terms of how much you can accrue in every, you know, or carry over at the end of the fiscal year is rather generous.
Is there any idea, maybe looking at what other towns do to get a sense as to nailing that?
I think when we, when we, yes, yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? So what would you guys, pardon?
Were you gonna ask something or?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm just amused that Jack's watching.
At least he called your phone and not ours.
I don't sign up for that reason.
Any thoughts on what you'd like to do about the police budget? I guess I generally like to have someone from the police department here. I mean, their budgets...
Especially this year.
Complex and there's some large requests in this year, so I'd like to consider holding it off till Monday, but that's really dependent on whether the chief can come.
I think we would want to maybe ask for both the chief and Captain Anderson because I know he played a large role in preparing the budget.
That would be great.
You know, just to give you a couple of things that we'll be looking at making some adjustments with, may or may not be aware that Captain Lawler has announced his retirement. So with that, we'll be doing testing, he's retiring in March, so he'll be doing the testing in this year. We don't have any valid test, promotional tests right now, so...
Kate, do you know how long they're good for?
Usually they're good for two years.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll have a bit of a domino effect. So we will put together proposed reductions for the administrative budget, the patrol budget, to reflect the fact that we'll be going from a captain who's got two years and is captain to an entry-level captain. My assumption will be that we'll take out a top-step lieutenant, top-step sergeant, and top-step patrol officer and replace each one with step one as people move up the ranks.
I think our big discussion is gonna be over...
The dispatches.
Civilian dispatch.
Yeah. That is really, most of their budget is, I don't want to say unremarkable, but yeah, you know, there's not, they're not asking for a lot of, for new programs. You know, there's some increases here and there, but that is the, they want to add back one motorcycle. When we were down staff, they had eliminated one of the motorcycles and they'd like to go back to two. I do support that. I think it's an important traffic enforcement tool.
I'd just like to ask them how much that motorcycle, one motorcycle is used. When we get a chance to do that.
Yeah.
Is it used seasonally? You know, is it this time, you know, this time of year?
Not tonight.
Right. Not tonight, no. But just generally speaking, the big nut in there is the, the SRO or the dispatchers.
Yep. And I'm gonna want quite a bit more detail on the impacts to scheduling. You know, we talk anecdotally about, you know, when we add another shift of civilian dispatchers, that that will free up sworn officers to be redeployed, but I'd like, I'd really like to have some more analytics around that. How does that enhance the schedule? How does it, if it, if it does it all, reduce overtime costs? And then as an aside to that, I would like to, and I can do some of this work on my own, but I would like to hear from the chief if they have been in any discussions with their colleagues in surrounding towns about regional dispatch. Because in all of the circles that I am in outside of Darien, it's a constant topic of discussion. I know that Fairfield and Westport are working toward civilian dispatch service sharing model. I believe that New Canaan, Wilton, Redding, and Ridgefield are looking to consolidate thing, more than just their dispatch. They're looking to share facilities, firing range, evidence, storage, all those things. Because several of those communities are in, their facilities are in need of replacement, so instead of building one, they want to share. So I'd like to hear from Ray if he's had conversations with his colleagues about that. Okay.
And also, the chief, I just, and you're talking about, there've been a buyout of firearms.
Yes.
It's not in the capital program at all, is it, all?
No, the firearms were being purchased through the fire alarm, the false alarm fund. But there is, there is money in one of the accounts for tasers for training.
Believe it.
But the weapons themselves were, were purchased from the fire alarm fund.
I'm surprised there's enough, $90,000.
Yep. So I appreciate that they're using funds for, you know, fundamental policing purpose, but I believe that weapons are really a town operating expense and probably shouldn't in the future come out of false alarm fund.
I totally agree with you. I wasn't really keen on the idea. Part of why they did it was they were looking at timing.
I see.
And, but also, quite frankly, the way those funds were set up by the RTM, we really couldn't say no. The police commission controls that, so...
There you go.
I never liked the way those funds, that fund or the false alarm, fire alarm fund was set up without any form of oversight from a town body, an appropriate town body, like the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen. So I agree, I don't think that's how it should have been done, but it wasn't something I had the authority to stop.
Sure. I do want to acknowledge, though, that they have been very judicious in how they've used those funds in the past for trainings, for their canines. So this one just struck me as, it really should be a...
It should be, yeah.
A budgeted expense.
It should, you know, the false alarm fund should really be more for things that we wouldn't be able to do through the operating budget typically. And I think the police have done, have been very responsible about how they've used that fund. But I agree, that's, that should be a town budget expense.
Also, just following up on what Jamie was saying about the civilian dispatchers and the regionalization, and if the conversations haven't taken place, can they take place? Because I feel it would be much better if we could have some shared services on our own terms versus the state telling us to have any shared services or consolidated services. And if we were to approve the civilian dispatchers and then in two or three years, we're then told we need to regionalize that, what do we do with these employees? Do we just let them go? And, you know, that, there's a pro and a con to that.
Yes.
You know, do you invest short-term when you could have been investing in a, in a police officer? So, so some pros and cons on that.
Well, I would say, you know, okay, if you took our situation as we are now and the state came in and said, you know, you've got to regionalize, we should be able to provide the services, the additional services like the SRO and the, and an narcotics officer out of our existing 51, because you might remember, right now, the night shift and the midnight shift dispatch are done by police officers. So...
Correct.
Also, Kate, I remember in the past, and I don't remember if it was Ray or Chief Lavello would say, they want someone in that dispatch office in the, at night. So if they could provide us with some figures of how many walk-ins they have, let's say, you know, whether it's after 8:00 PM or after 11:00 PM, you know, obviously there are, I would think there are police officers in the building. They may not be in the dispatch office, obviously right now, because someone else is, but could that person be moved to the dispatch office, not as a dispatcher, but as someone that would be there for people to walk in the door?
Well, and does it have to be a police officer if, if you go to a regional dispatch? Does that person who is manning the desk have to be a sworn person, sworn officer?
And then I'd like to be reminded of what we're spending to date on civilian dispatch, all in, so that we can compare that to those who are looking at a regional model, what their cost will be to join those regional systems versus what we're already paying.
Yeah. And I think we need to also then consider what we're paying to have fire dispatch done outside.
Sure. Yep.
Because I don't think we've heard much about, so the change in the dispatch office, taking the fire out. I don't think we've had much reporting back as to how that mayor mana have affected that civilian dispatchers or the dispatch office right now.
Um, yeah. No, we've heard more from, like, the fire department saying how happy they are.
Right, but we haven't, I mean, there has been a reduction of calls that have filtered through.
No, no, there haven't, there has not been a reduction in calls. The amount of call still comes in. It's the amount of time that they need to spend on the phone. They do still, even, they, my understanding is that they should be, you know, transferring the call relatively quickly to CMed. But that they also would still stay on the line to hear the ongoing conversation because they still may have a need to dispatch a police officer or...
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily change too much on our end.
Correct. Because remember, our police really are our first responders for medical.
Right.
Right. Now we have paramedics and we're eager to hear the data on how often the paramedics get there first, which is, they talked about that in our quarterly report.
Yes.
Department head meeting, that sometimes they get there first now.
I think it's probably all in where they are.
True, yeah. Okay, are there any other questions up front that Kate can ask of Ray and Dawn before they come? No?
Feel free to, you know, if something comes to you tomorrow, shoot me an email.
Yep. Okay, great. So we are back here Monday night at 7:00 PM.
You have a regular meeting.
A regular meeting and then we will follow it with our budget meeting.
And I'm trying to keep your regular meeting agenda...
I just have some comments to address. I think it's great that we did it in three days or three nights so far. I think it was better to have a budget workshop over several days than to have it in one day as the Board of Education does for their January, Saturday, because you need to prepare and you can take some stuff home. I just think what the Board of Education does in their documentation, their material is something very smart. They use a TACS and have responsibility centers that are numbered. They also have all the line items numbered. It is very difficult sometimes, even for me here, to follow which item we are on right now. It would be so much easier if we could go to item number 287, 288. Certainly the public watching from home or Jack sitting at home having the budget book, you get lost where you are. It would be very helpful if there were line item numbers, then we can get to them quickly. And the last thing, small, when you don't have actuals because it's too seasonal, too seasonal or it's too, it would make sense to look at actuals. I, the Board of Education presentations use projected numbers, which then, you know, whoever does the projections will know what's coming and it's not booked yet, but the expenses is coming, so just put it in instead of saying a column is, there's nothing, just say the column is projected.
So I'm, couple of comments and a question. I first, you know, we did used to include the account numbers. The problem is we were asked to provide increasing amounts of data year to year to year, so my question would be, and I don't mean this to sound the way it's probably gonna sound, but what would you eliminate? In order for us to fit the account numbers in, what information do we, in what we're providing in terms of the actuals, the budgets, what would you say, get rid of that in order to fit the numbers in?
Does the Board of Ed have account numbers or just line numbers?
Line items.
Line items, okay.
Are they saying once before?
The library, if you go to the library's budget, they, is that what you're talking about, Bert? Would that be...
Well, I'm talking about the Board of Education has it throughout.
Right, but, yeah, but when they, when they put it, like, do they put the account number, like, you know, 82001, or are they just saying on a certain page, it's line one?
Well, I don't know their chart of accounts, so I don't know if the line item number is the same as the account number.
So what, what, okay, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I have their, we have their books, so we'll take a look.
The other thing, we did try for a number of years to put in a projected actual.
Okay.
And it failed. You know, people, most of the time what we saw was people simply copied the budget number to be the projected actual number. It was not given, given thought. You know, it wasn't somebody sitting there actually saying, yeah, I think I will spend this much more or this much less than my budget. And again, you know, I'd be willing to put it in and try and get our department heads to take that number seriously, but again, the question I would ask is what do we take out in order to fit that in? And I mean that seriously.
There may be a very valid reason why we don't have the numbers. All I'm saying, it would be much easier for us to follow where you are.
Oh, I totally understand that. So in all seriousness, if you could tell me what, you know, which information you value less on the page, and we plan to ask people at the end of the process, you know, what worked on here, what didn't. And so that's when, in order to fit numbers, we really would need to take something else out.
Okay.
So think about that. You know, what are we telling you here that really isn't necessary to tell you?
Well, see, this is how it works in practice for FNB. Jack has a very good system where the chair for town or chair for education collects the information from all the other FNB members. And so when you bring all this information together to sort it out, everyone has different comments, some of them overlap, but most of the time different comments. When you try to get it organized, it's almost impossible if you don't follow some kind of numeric system. That's all I'm saying, because otherwise you overlook.
I totally get it, totally get it, and would like to be able to accommodate that.
A numbering system might be easier, not, not... A numbering system might be easy and not, not terribly impact what you have here.
Right.
We're really just numbering what the library is.
Like the library.
Yeah.
So on, on any page, you're going to have a line 1, 2, 3, 4.
Right, and you can always say page.
281, line 4.
Whatever. That might be helpful, might be an easy way to do it.
And on the, having a projection for items that maybe are just a one-time thing, they haven't occurred yet, rather than have, try to squeeze yet another column on there, would it be helpful to either have information in the commentary that says these items are one-time, they occur at the end of the year, or perhaps a note on the bottom of the expenditure page, you know, asterisk them or something, and, you know, these are one-time entries completely.
It would only apply to the ones where we don't have actuals, it's so easy with the actual, we just double the number in most cases, but where you don't have any actual, you can use that column and just write on top projected or just.
The only thing is the column might have a combination of some that do and some that have actuals.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, just put those ones that are.
Sheet though, if we could.
Yeah, so we'll put, maybe put note on the expend, the bottom of the expenditure list.
1, 3, asterisk.
Make sure the box is.
Okay.
Thank you for the comment.
Yeah, we can't make it any smaller, don't make it any smaller, please.
Okay.
But we could pop, you know, we could possibly drop one of the years of actuals, I mean, you know, we're giving three years of actuals, so maybe that's.
I don't know about that.
And for instance, here's the one.
What are you saying?
Put on a letter paper.
Okay, thanks everybody, we'll be.